Hello, I'm Mark Els, Principal Town Manager, and this is my Town Manager Communication for the period of December 7th through December 20th. And first, I want to wish everybody a happy and safe holiday. I hope this will be our, it's gonna be my last Town Manager Communication for this calendar year, 2023, and I hope it was a good year for all of you. We're proceeding with the Budget Action Calendar for FY 2025. Town Manager Calendar Year Fee Hearing was held back on November 14th, and the proposed calendar year fees were taken under advisement. Comments were accepted through December 14th, and I will be approving those fees on December 22nd, this Friday, for the upcoming calendar year. And you can find all of this information relevant to our budget and fees, et cetera, on our town website. The public comment period on the proposed dog control regulations was opened until Friday, December 8th. Staff's been reviewing the numerous comments we've received and responding to the questions, and I've taken it under advisement at this point. Staff has drafted a modified version of the regulation reflecting many of the comments received, and I do expect that we will move to a final set of regulations. I'll keep you advised as we move toward approving a modified, it's not the proposed regs as originally written. Again, we've taken the many comments under advisement. We'll be modifying the regulations before any approval occurs in the future. On Tuesday, December 19th, our Board of Health approved a modified sewer connection policy. That connection policy is being added to our town website, both on our Water Resources page and under a Board of Health and certainly the Inspection Services Board of Health Division, and so that information, it will be available shortly, if it's not already on the website. On Monday, December 11th, I attended the meeting of the Energy Facility Siting Board to comments on the Energy Facility Siting Board tentative decision on the Park City Wind Project. I reiterated the town's goals as the framework for my comments, and those goals were that the town desired to assure protection of its environment and water resources, minimize the impacts of proposed construction activities on our residents, the need to be sure that the Park City Wind Project doesn't delay the town's deployment of our comprehensive wastewater management sewer project, and impact any funding relevant to that, that project and plan. A request that the full Park City Wind cable route be tested for electromagnetic radiation readings, the need for full containment of hazardous fluids in the event of an accidental release at the proposed Park City Wind substations, that our industrial-leading Vineyard Wind protocols be set as a minimum standard for such safeguards in their decision, and the banning the use of fire foams containing PFOS chemicals. I also asked the EFSP to allow the town's amended petition to intervene in the proceedings and the town's proposed specific edits to the board's tentative decision and amendment. The board voted unanimously to deny the town's amended petition to intervene, following which the board voted unanimously to approve the tentative decision with amendments. On December 15, 2023, the board issued its final decision. The board's denial of the town's petition to intervene means the town does not have the ability to appeal from the final decision. However, at the town's urging, the board ordered the town and Park City Wind to meet to discuss the town's recommended conditions and ordered Park City Wind to file a so-called compliance filing with the board on January 5th, 2024, in which Park City Wind reports back to the board on those discussions. Park City Wind is required to provide a copy of its compliance filing to the town, and the board may provide the town an opportunity to respond to the compliance filing if there are still areas of opportunity to respond to that compliance filing. Board staff noted that the board has authority to investigate a compliance filing and can conduct proceedings or issue discovery. Board staff also indicated that the host community agreement could be a mechanism to incorporate any agreements between Park City Wind and the town. The board limited construction activities to 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, but allowed staging and no idling prep beginning at 6:30. It excluded emergency work and long-duration work, meaning 24-hour work, from the limits and required notice and coordination and to coordinate with the town. I've also put other specifics in my report, if you'd like to go in and take a look at those specifics. The town legal staff met with Park City Wind representatives to commence discussions on the town's proposed amendments to this EFSP tentative decision. In addition, on December 16th, the town filed with the board a petition to intervene on the Commonwealth Wind Project. The standard practice is that a petition to intervene is filed after the notice of education is given, and that hasn't happened yet in Commonwealth Wind. There's only a draft notice at the present time, but because we filed early, we do not anticipate that a hearing officer will rule on our petition until after the notice of education is given. But we have filed. We were asked by that by the public as to whether we had done that yet on Commonwealth Wind. We explained that we didn't have to yet, but they asked us to, and we're on that particular project. This is not the Park City Wind, this is the Commonwealth Wind. We have expressed our opposition. Then we felt appropriate to proceed in that manner and half. As reported in my last report, the town has contracted with a consultant to assist with the development and implementation of public outreach program relative to the use of opioid funds that we receive from the drug manufacturers and distributors, the design team consisting of the Chair of the Human Services Committee, Deputy Chief of Police, Hyannis Fire Chief, Inspection Services Director, Town's Communications Director, and Barnstable Public Schools Director of Social Emotional Learning and Student Services has been created to work with the consultant. Their first meeting was conducted in November. They'll meet weekly, biweekly, or as needed to plan and execute the efforts of this process. This group will be responsible for poning the process and determining if other elements or events are needed and how the efforts will be rolled out. Some important actions the consultant and design team will implement include identifying key stakeholders, developing a communication strategy, and conducting public meetings in the form of workshops and focus groups. The first public meeting is expected to occur January 2024. On December 4th of this year, Governor Healy signed Chapter 77 of the Acts of 2023, Section 9, which provides in part for the following exceptions to the general rules that all receipts are to be recorded as general fund revenues, which is set up under General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53. Not reoccurring unanticipated sums received by multiple cities, towns, or districts, and not otherwise provided for by general or special law may, upon the approval of the Director of Accounts, be expended at the direction of the Chief Executive Officer without further appropriation, only for the singular purpose for which the monies were received. In the case of the town of Barnstable, the Chief Executive Officer is the Town Manager. The Director of Accounts has determined that cities and towns that have received or will receive funds in the fiscal year 2024 or thereafter pursuant to the settlement agreement enter into by the Commonwealth with opioid distributors and opioid makers for prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery, may place said funds into a special revenue fund. The proceeds can then be expended without further appropriation at the direction of the Chief Executive Officer, only for the purposes identified in said settlement agreement. This change was made as the settlement proceeds have restrictions in place unlike other receipts that have to be credited to the general fund. In addition, settlement funds that have become part of free cash may be appropriated into the special revenue fund by a vote of the community's legislative body. So at this point, legal and finance have taken this under review. They'll come back probably at the next council meeting, and in my next Town Manager Report, or perhaps the subsequent one, they'll come back with recommendations. We'll discuss this with our town council, communicate with our community, and let you know how we will manage these funds moving forward. But that is a change that was just adopted on December 4th by our governor. That concludes my Town Manager update, and at this time, I will turn this over to Kelly Colby, Communications Manager for the Public Works Department, and she'll be providing an update on Water Resource Management Planning, including our comprehensive wastewater management plan. So again, thank you all, and enjoy your holidays.
Thank you, Town Manager Els. My name is Kelly Colby from the Department of Public Works, and I will be walking you through this week's Water Resources Management Update. Being that we are, you know, at the close of this calendar year, and we do have some new town councillors who have joined us, we thought it would be a great idea to sort of take a look at Phase 1 efforts that are ongoing to protect our water resources. So we are currently just starting year three of our first 10-year phase, and work being performed currently as part of this phase has a direct impact on nitrogen removal in the Centerville River watershed. We do anticipate first connections for portions of the Strawberry Hill Road project route to be available this coming spring, and as Town Manager Els reported, we will be collaborating with the Board of Health on their recently adopted sewer connection policy. If you look at the graph in the middle, we'll take a look at our linear feet of sewer installed. So in fiscal year 23, we had just over 10,000 linear feet of sewer installed, and then in fiscal, this past fiscal year and these last six months or so, so about the last year and a half, we've had another almost 25,000 linear feet of sewer installed, giving us a total to-date linear feet of sewer over 35,000. So a lot of work has been done over the last 16 months in particular, and much of that is due to Route 28 East Sewer Project progressing very nicely and all of the off-road sewer construction that we were able to perform this summer. And then in terms of sewer service stubs, this is looking at properties that will be connecting as part of this program. In fiscal year 23, we had 100, and we've added about 168 since then, giving us a total of 268 properties with sewer service stubs for future connection. Also want to take a look at recent initiatives for the CWMP. Again, acting as really a refresher to make sure that everyone's on the same page in terms of what's being done across town to advance our water resources efforts. The first being our watershed permit application. The town submitted our watershed permit application on September 1st. We were the first in the state to do so after the new regulations were put in place by Mass DEP, and that submission is currently in review. We did this application on the basis of requesting a watershed permit to protect the entire town of Barnstable, so not each, just each individual watershed, but really the entire town, and will continue to keep the community updated as we hear and if we hear anything from Mass DEP. We've also submitted our most recent CWMP annual report. Water quality monitoring data was submitted to the Cape Cod Commission as part of our compliance, and the full report is available on barnstablewaterresources.com. We are also in the final design stages of our homeowner sewer connection guide. We anticipate this connection guide will be available ahead of first connections this spring, and will incorporate the newly adopted sewer connection policy as voted on by the Barnstable Board of Health. Additionally, we've been spearheading a variety of different outreach and engagement initiatives. In the last fiscal year and a half, we've completed over 320 one-on-one resident calls specific to the CWMP. So this isn't just all of the calls that come into the Department of Public Works, but just looking at the calls that specifically relate to questions regarding sewer connection, construction timing, roadwork impacts, and various other questions related to our water resources. And to support those questions coming from the public, we've engaged in over 40 different community meetings, many of which are public outreach and information meetings hosted by the town, and then also private meetings with residential associations, Barnstable Realtors, for example. And then most recently, we've engaged with the Barnstable Adult Community Center to develop a Barnstable Water Resources 101 Workshop Series. We hosted our first workshop earlier this month, and we have a next session coming up at the end of January. And this is a great session that walks attendees through the Barnstable Water Resources website, really helps them navigate the website and the new developments on that site, but also specifically walks through the anticipated sewer connection process, anticipated costs, and provides an overview of the financial support resources available to our residents and property owners. Next, we'll look at a updated plan view of Phase 1. So this has been updated as of this month, looking at the various projects in Phase 1. Specifically, we have callouts here for any projects that we deem active. So that means either they are in active construction, we are anticipating sewer connections, or they're actively in some level of preliminary design or survey. And we'll take a look at each of these individual projects on the coming slides, but to give you a nice visual of sort of what we're looking at in terms of sewer construction as part of this first 10-year phase and the variety of projects and areas that we are focused on. Now we'll dive into each of the individual projects currently being worked on as part of this first 10-year phase, with Route 28 East Sewer Expansion Project up first. This is obviously the most visible project right now, as we have active construction ongoing, and it's a foundational piece of infrastructure for the CWMP. It includes the Finney's Lane Pump Station, which is right at the corner of Finney's Lane, Route 28, which is really going to be a large integral piece of infrastructure to help convey wastewater to the Water Pollution Control Facility. Sewer construction, as I mentioned, is ongoing. We continue to operate with two crews. The first crew, which is on Finney's Lane, that portion of sewer that needs to be completed between Great Marsh Road and Wacoquicket Lane. So again, not any of the portion of Finney's Lane that has been recently repaved. That all was part of the Strawberry Hill Road Project, which we'll look at next, but this portion of Finney's Lane from about Great Marsh Road to Wacoquicket Lane is separate part of this Route 28 East work. The second crew is actually back at the Finney's Lane Pump Station, completing some force main work within the project site, and then we'll transition to West Main Street. Previously, we had reported that that transition to West Main Street was looking at happening in early December, but we actually have an update from the contractor, and they will be targeting West Main Street work in early to mid-January. And that work will be from about Route 28 to Strawberry Hill Road, completing sewer construction in that portion of the roadway. So as that schedule firms up, we will perform additional outreach, media releases, social media communications, to make sure that all over the residents and businesses in that area are prepared for that construction. And we do anticipate sewer construction for Route 28 East to be completed this coming spring with restoration to follow. And then, as I noted, this project includes the Finney's Lane Pump Station. Building construction continues, and we'll take a look at a recent photo of the pump station in just a moment. Electrical work has also commenced at the site, and we anticipate construction of that entire, the pump station in its entirety to be completed this coming spring as well. And then, as promised, a look at the pump station. So this was taken just yesterday, actually, so a very recent look at the building as a whole, and you can see that really the design characteristics were created in such a way to mimic the aesthetic of other buildings in the vicinity, so that very Cape Cod cottage aesthetic that you see there, and really the building is coming along very nicely with roofing being one of the most recent activities that is taking place. And then to just cap off our look at Route 28 East, I really wanted to be able to show a view of the project map in its entirety and what work is still remaining. So everything in green that you see here in this map is completed, whether that's completed sewer construction or also some of the water main installation or water services that were installed as part of the project. And then Crew 1, as I noted on the previous slide, is currently installing sewer in that portion of Finney's Lane from about Great Marsh. Actually, they're closer to Widdoway right now, and they'll be progressing north towards Strawberry Hill Road, and then ultimately up to Wacoquicket Lane. And then down below, Crew 2, we're looking at early January, early to mid-January, to complete that portion of construction, sewer construction on West Main Street from about Strawberry, from about Route 28 East to Strawberry Hill Road. So that's really those, those two red sections are the remaining pieces of sewer construction work to close out this project. Strawberry Hill Road Sewer Expansion Project is essentially complete, or about 95% complete here, with all gravity sewer, sewer service laterals, and sewer riser construction complete to date. Strawberry Hill Road Pump Station is in final startup and testing, and we anticipate first connections for a portion of the project route to be available this coming spring. So just a reminder that this project was designed and constructed in coordination with the Vineyard Wind Project, which is why you'll see there's portions of the project route that are going to be available to connect as early as this coming spring, and then some of the other portions of the project are reliant on some additional infrastructure, one being the completion of the Finney's Lane Pump Station. So we'll, we'll see a staggered approach to connections, but the bulk of this project will be ready to connect this coming spring. So really just looking at a couple of months from now, where we'll start communicating that connection process to those property owners. And then restoration is in progress. We're very near completion here. Vineyard Wind is completing paving restoration as part of their host community agreement, and just has small portions of roadways left, one being Wacoquicket Lane, and then a very small section of Strawberry Hill Road from Route 28 to Pine Street, which will be scheduled this spring when paving conditions are irritable. We'll shift over to the Centerville Village Sewer Expansion Project. This project expedites sewer expansion within the roadways along the proposed Park City Wind deck bank route. This project does include the Mother's Park Pump Station as well, and we are currently reviewing the 75% sewer design plans. We're also actively preparing for our SRF funding submission, which requires construction contracts to be in place by this summer. So with that said, we are watching the Park City Wind schedule and reviewing contingency plans as necessary to ensure that we can get the maximum amount of funding and subsidies available to support the construction for this project. We also have a number of additional sewer projects in some level of design or preliminary survey. We'll take a look at them one by one, the first being in red, the Route 28 West Sewer Expansion Project. This is a very large project that is essentially the backbone to our westward expansion of sewer. That project is in preliminary design. We've just wrapped up another, another phase of soil borings and survey, and we can anticipate construction beginning sometime in late 2025. As we get closer to that construction timing, we will reengage the public with our public information meetings and resident outreach and keep the community well informed of what that construction schedule looks like. We also have the Finney's Lane Neighborhoods Project in design. That's that light blue that you see there, and essentially that project takes all of the infrastructure that was installed on Finney's Lane as part of the Strawberry Hill Road Sewer Expansion Project, and allows us to then expand into the neighborhoods on the east and west side of Finney's Lane. Preliminary design is ongoing, and we've continued our private roadway utility easement takings and siting of sewer pump stations, and we do anticipate in the coming months to have our next list of private roads for town council for consideration. And this again would be for the private roadway utility easement takings. As a refresher, it does not change the status of the road. Those roads remain private, but the utility easement allows us to actually perform the sewer construction needed for these projects in those private roadways. We also have the Great Marsh Road Neighborhoods Project in, in design and survey, and that would be that purple project that you see there sort of in the center of the map. That is going to be sewer-ing the various neighborhoods along Great Marsh Road as well as to the north, and we anticipate construction commencing sometime in late 2028. Long Pond Area and Long Beach Road Projects are also in preliminary design. Long Pond Area being that brown color in the center of your screen, and then the Long Beach Road Project being that yellow project identified. Both have anticipated construction start dates of late 2027. We'll also look at the Old Jermouth Road Project, which is in that dark green to the right of the map. That survey work has been completed and design is ongoing with construction anticipated for late 2028. And then Old Craigville Road is that light pink color that you'll see in the map there. Survey efforts are ongoing. We anticipate those wrapping up likely early in the new year with construction anticipated to commence in 2030. So quite a lot of work being done in terms of preliminary survey and design with, with a lot of construction being planned and timed over the next, really, you know, six to seven years. Now we'll shift over to the Water Pollution Control Facility, where our solid processing facility upgrades continue to advance. Our SCADA automation and control work is ongoing. You'll see the main control panel wiring right there on your screen, that photo to the right there, where our automation continues. And then, as of this week, our new order control systems are fully functional, and we do anticipate project completion or substantial completion by this coming February. We also have the 720 Main Street Pump Station Replacement Project. We're really ramping up our efforts there. This is allowing for capacity upgrades to support growth really in downtown Hyannis, and it essentially, the project entails construction of a new sewer pump station at the town-owned property at 725 Main Street, so directly across from where the current submersible pump station is located. Mobilization and site prep has already begun, and the contractor anticipates preparing for excavation support with the driving of sheets as early as the first or second week of January. So that work does typically result in some vibration, so we will have vibration monitoring in place, and we've already done an initial resident and outreach, a level of resident outreach and coordination with both residents and businesses, and will continue to do that as construction progresses and certainly ahead of any excavation at the site. We'll also look at the nitrogen removal and headworks improvements programs. So essentially, this, these projects are aimed at reducing the average total nitrogen concentration that's discharged by the plant, and the goal is to get that discharge down to three milligrams per liter. We're currently permitted at the plant at 10 milligrams per liter, and on average, we average about six milligrams per liter. So all told, when the work is done for these projects, we're looking at essentially cutting our average total nitrogen concentration in half. And these projects really are in a three-pronged approach, the first being the replacement of our headworks facility. This is essentially where flow comes into the plant and where large solids are screened out. This infrastructure needs to be replaced due to age, but also because it will allow for improved screening capability that will support some of the proposed processes that we'll talk about next. The second piece of this project, or the second prong, would be our aeration upgrades, and this is essentially taking our secondary treatment process, which is currently an aeration system, and transitioning that to a Bard Info process, again, ultimately improving the nitrogen removal. And then we'll cap that off with an MBR, a new tertiary treatment system known as a membrane biological reactor, which will, is effectively a filtration membrane that will further reduce nitrogen removal capability at the plant. So all told, all of this together, helping us reduce that total average nitrogen discharge down to three milligrams per liter or less. One other thing I would note is that MBR also sets the plant up for success in terms of adding other treatment systems down the road that may be required for future needs such as PFOS or other contaminants of emerging concern. So a lot of work really being done here with the nitrogen removal and headworks improvement projects to, to set us up to reduce our average total nitrogen concentration being discharged. And then with that is also the effluent disposal evaluation. Our water reuse and disposal alternatives analysis continues to progress with our consultant CDM Smith, and that will be ongoing for quite some time. We've looked at sewer construction. We've We've looked at sewer construction. We've looked at all of the work being done at the Water Pollution Control Facility, but there's also a number of projects being done to address water quality in our ponds and lakes, the first being the Association to Preserve Cape Cod. Their boat ramp stormwater improvement project, which actually identified Shubal Pond Boat Ramp located on Willmantic Drive as a priority boat ramp. So together, the town and the A P C C will work to address stormwater management at that site. And work's already begun. Last week, we had soil evaluations completed within the boat ramp parking lot. And we anticipate a public participation meeting to occur sometime this spring as the proj- the project progresses. We have another stormwater improvement project um in progress at Clamshell Cove Road. This is actually a grant um supported by the Natural Resources Conservation Service and will allow us to make stormwater improvements that will ultimately reduce stormwater imprint inputs into the uh Shoestring Bay Estuary. So N R C S has already approved the project proposal that was submitted, and now our next step um includes completing an existing condition survey. And then the Long Pond Marson's Mill Floating Treatment Wetland Pilot Study continues to advance as well. Uh, most recently, we've received our mooring permit. And we are preparing our request for quotes and project specifications as we target a spring twenty twenty-four deployment. Our ponds and lakes management, monitoring and management plan program is also looking at activities um and recommendations for a ver- variety of freshwater sources in town. The first being Levels Pond, where our draft report is currently in review. And then monitoring is in progress through twenty twenty-four at Lake Wakwaket, Beers's Pond, and Gooseberry Pond. After that monitoring data comes in and is analyzed, we will anticipate releasing management plans sometime in early twenty twenty-five. And then just to end, a a quick look at the communications resources available to the council as well as our entire community. So any questions regarding sewer, whether that is um project or property specific, whether or not a project, a property is um identified to receive sewer, um questions regarding sewer construction timing, uh roadwork impacts, those can all be directed uh to me. I've left my town email address here on the screen, so feel free to email me, share that email with residents who may have questions as well. So we have a team of engineers here who can also assist with technical questions. I will add that on the town of Barnstable website, specifically on the assessors database, there is a property lookup tool that folks can also use to identify whether or not their property is uh subject to receive sewer as phase one, two, or three of our C W M P. Um, but ultimately, all of those um property-specific questions can come to me as well. We've also um developed quite a number of resources on the barnstablewaterresources.com website. The site has undergone a a complete transformation in terms of a design base lift, but also we've added a a great deal of content to that site. Um, really using it as a one-stop shop for our current project status, construction updates, sewer connection questions and more. We also have a library of all of our recent presentations and meeting recordings available and a modified um navigation and improved search functionality that really takes into consideration what our residents are are looking for in terms of um, you know, anticipated costs, the sewer connection process, um where they can learn more about uh financial support and resources. And much of the the design that the site has undergone, the the revised design is a direct uh result of conversations we've had with residents. Um, how they want to navigate the site, the type of information they're looking for. So I really highly encourage um sharing that website with our residents and constituents so that they're aware of the resources there. And then, of course, we have Barnstable E-News and the My Barnstable Mobile App where we're sharing a digest of roadwork impacts, current construction projects, and also wa- water quality alerts. So a lot of great information. I know this was a more comprehensive update than we've done previously, so please feel free to reach out to myself or Director Santos with any questions and certainly utilize the Barnstable Water Resources website. That concludes our Water Resources update, and thank you very much.